Okay. All right. Welcome to the October 16th, 2014 work session. On our agenda for tonight is a preliminary discussion about goals. As a reminder, from that nice email we got, or actually I got, to ask the board members to try to speak closely to the microphones, just so people can hear. So as a preliminary discussion, we had mentioned some things during our retreat during the summertime, and we've kind of come full circle with that and suggested at our last meeting that we really need to come up with some goals that we can achieve by the end of this Because I think we have a perfect opportunity now that the facility and tuition discussion is happening at the Joint Advisory Committee, and we can have a little bit more time to focus on what we think we could try to master. In front of you, I gave you a copy, and I'll have to fully credit the Hampton School Board and the Hampton School District, SAU 90. This is a sample of their agenda that they use. And what I alluded to at our last meeting was having our goals on the agenda, and all of our items, as much as possible, could be aligned with our goals. Nate followed up with that and suggested that people bring some ideas for goals for us, with the understanding this is a preliminary discussion, so Elizabeth is not available to be with us tonight, so I'm hopeful we can at least get some things on paper and do a follow-up at our next meeting in November. So would it be helpful if I read what the goals were for this sample, and then maybe we could talk about what we really think should be some goals? Would that be helpful? So they have six listed on their agenda. The first one is student learning. The second one is human capital and resources. The third is communication. The fourth, governance. The fifth, finance. And the sixth is facility. And as I read through it, it seemed pretty interesting, because those seem to be some of our top six that we do quite frequently here. And so I'd like to add that if we could maybe talk about what our ideas are for goals, and how they might align to this, or how we could try to draft what maybe our priorities are for the next few months.
It might be worth me just offering that what we did at Hampton was a strategic planning process, went through a strategic planning process, and we drafted a document that was a three- to five-year plan, and these are the six primary categories that were in that. And within each of those categories, there were eight, 10, 15, you know, different goals or objectives, I guess. You'd have to, maybe goals, because I think they weren't really, maybe they were not narrow enough to be an objective specifically, but they were, for instance, under governance, there was reference made to contracting, recognizing the next three to five years, we've got to contemplate a new bus contract, and we need to deal with, we needed to deal with board training, and inter-board communication, and so on and so forth. So there are a whole list of things. Not all of those can be on the hit parade every single year. So what we then have done in each of the subsequent years is we've gone back and picked a manageable number in each category of things that the board and the administration will work together to try to pursue. Now, a couple of those are big overarching things that stick, like 100% proficiency for all students in core areas, as assessed by kneecap and blah, 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 blah. We had a lot of conversation about whether we should have lofty goals, like who thinks we're ever going to get to 100%? Isn't that an unmanageable goal? And there's been debate in each cycle about whether we should talk about 5% gains, or three-point gains, or what have you, as a more measurable thing. But in each category, there are some action items that are supposed to happen in any given year. And we try to give credence to the things that are real, like in the area of finance, if we have to finance and/or governance, depending on how you categorize it, if you had to negotiate with your teachers or with another union, that's a big item on the list. And so you can't have 7,000 big items, or you can't even maybe have seven big items. If that one's going to eat up a lot of time, then you kind of push other things to another year. So that's to explain how that kind of works. And then because we go through that and we set that each year, what the administration tries to do is tries to peg the program at each meeting back to what are we supporting? What are we working towards? Are we working on this, or this, or this? And it helps to identify the things that are outliers, that really weren't on the radar, because then you can measure, wow, if we're really now putting significant time and effort into that conversation, and that wasn't even on our list of things we were going to be working on, how does that balance with the time that we've got to dedicate to those other things? So anyway, that's just an explanation of how we've used it.
Well, that's a good segue, because I guess my question, my first question out of the gate is, is that out of our own school district is, you know, it's been a struggle even for me to figure out what the strengths are and what our weaknesses are, so that we can accumulate them in one place, so that we can set the goals. And I know that Mike's here now, and he can help us out down this road, but even as far as like the testing goes, I mean, the testing comes home, and my daughter comes in and says, oh, I got a 210 on this, and I'm like, whoa, what does that mean? What are you comparing? Where's our baseline? Where do we need to be, and where do we need to go? And that gets me into the conversation, or the thought process of how do we evaluate good education? How do we assess it? And does it make sense for us to look at it from a perspective of when they graduate college? Or how many kids graduate college? Or is it how we progress within the K-12 season, or your school lifetime, or career? Or where does that go? And how many, or how many kids enter into college? Or does that mean anything if they have to leave college and pursue another career because of different circumstances?
Right.
You know, so that was one struggle, you know, for our conversation. I guess the next one would be is that within our own district, if we're talking about, I know we're getting ready to talk to the teachers in that contract negotiations, but I think that knowing that going in would be a great facilitator for a conversation, so that we can improve on these areas. So I guess I'm kind of throwing it out there for a conversation piece, to say, you know, where do we go from here? I mean, you know, I know Mike's been around for a lot longer than I have.
Well, I guess what you probably want is how we compare to other schools in the region, and what we need to improve on, basically, based on what you just said.
Yeah.
You know? And that would go to what do we offer? I'd like to see what do we offer now? What do other schools offer? And what can we add to the curriculum to make it better? Or to match up to other?
And that's where my struggle is. As we go back to, you know, a documentation of a curriculum that should have us, you know, what do we have in the classroom? What are we teaching?
Right.
You know, how many kids do we have? What are our goals within those classes? And how does that, let's say, let's take math, or US history, US history 01. Well, US history 01 and New Market may not be the same US 01 history in, you know, Epping. It may not be the same, but we don't, we can't compare what we have. And that's my struggle.
Well, isn't that, I mean, part and parcel of common core, though? I mean, isn't that what that's supposed to represent?
Right.
Is that all of these classes are teaching basically the same information, so if they move from one place to another, that they are at the same level as others?
skills, you're asking and answering questions like who, what, when, where, why, and how. So those are just the basic skeleton of what skills you need to assess them on and teach them. But you can decide as a district, how are you going to be doing that? Are you going to be doing that as the little engine that could? So what happened to him? Who was he? Where was he? How did he get up there? So that's the basic, I call it a skeleton, and then districts get a chance to really determine how they're going to be teaching those standards.
But the curriculum, to me, is the skeleton.
Well, the curriculum
Because teachers individually can teach things in a different manner.
Right.
I guess, well, to me, and tell me if I'm wrong, there's a difference, in my world, it's different between, curriculum to me is the content, not the method in which the teachers teach. So the content would be, you know, like
It's the skeleton.
Well, that, yeah, yes, it is. You're right. But it's, there's more meat on the bone than just the skeleton. There's more, there's more, there's blood in there, too. There's also the skin and all the different sections, you know?
You had to go to blood?
I know.
It's all there, you know?
It's Halloween.
It's all of it.
Well, I mean, yeah, I understand you want, you know, a little more, you know, this is what they're going to learn, these are the textbooks we're using, this, these are, you know, maybe a basic timeline of, you know, what they'll be learning as they go throughout the year, but I think it's really hard to pin a lot of that down, based on the fact that, you know, I mean, some teachers may find they need to spend more time on one thing than another, or, you know, they don't want to move their class ahead just because their timeline says so, you know, so.
Right.
Yeah, it's, yeah.
So what I just passed out to you was just, because I knew we would definitely hone in on curriculum, because that's something, at least for me, I've heard Matt talk about it, we've talked about it in the past as well. So I just showed you a basic curriculum pacing map for my classroom, and just so you know, we, where I work, we have not had the luxury of having a curriculum coordinator for a very long time, until this year. And we're now blessed to have that luxury of a half-time curriculum coordinator. So a lot of the work that the staff have had to do is create pacing maps and curriculum on our own. So I know we talked about format. This was just something I thought could be really helpful. So it talks about trimester, it talks about the unit name or section, that child-friendly language students should be able to, and then how it's aligned to grade level expectations. So the second thing I passed out was like a standards-based report card, and you can see within that, the bottom three are those Common Core standards. So I take that and determine how I'm going to have the integration of knowledge and ideas, text types and purposes, range of reading, and level of text complexity. That's for me, how I refer to it as the skeleton. I need to definitely make sure that I integrate those things into the classroom, and I can create the curriculum that will aid that skill to be taught and assessed. So I'm not thinking that, you know, we're going to be the ones to say, this is how the curriculum needs to look, but just so people can try to see the connection, maybe, if you need it, this is just something I wanted to show you. So it seems like student learning, we should definitely put evaluation, assessment, curriculum assessment, and validity. I mean, do we have pacing guides? Do we have alignment to Common Core? Are we doing standards-based reporting? And if we are, what does it look like?
Well, so, I mean, I guess, you know, as we flesh this out, and we come up with, we're trying to come up with attainable, measurable and attainable goals, obviously strength in curriculum, you can use lofty, not lofty, you can use words like that, but I think for us as a board, we might want to walk before we run, and so our goal might be something like have knowledge of the curriculum at K5.
Or you're documenting it.
That's what I mean, like have a document, be able to look at it, consider it, talk about it, measure it, what have you. Because until such time as we can say that we can put our finger on some of these things, or have conversation about them, and I'll be looking at the same star in the sky, you know what I mean? You gotta, you can steer a ship really easily if everybody on the ship is looking in the right direction, you know what I mean? My father used to say, he used to talk about, you know, it's easier to move the crowd of people if they're all looking at the same target. You can find a new one, but if everybody's looking in different directions, it's really tough to, so, you know, if we walk before we run, and we look for things like, we need that, I mean, if we don't all know what the assessment tools look like, then one of the goals might be, we should all be familiar with the assessment tools in use. What comes after that may be nothing, because we may all become familiar with them, and go, hey, great. But we might become familiar with them, and then say, well, we'd like to have a more standards-based reporting tool, really. Well, what does that mean? Let's see one, and then, and that would be another goal, if you want, or another objective. So it's, you can really, you can really get crazy with, you know, throwing mud at the wall, but at some point, given already that we're into October, and we have things, irons in the fire, that we should be honest about when we judge our goals, trying to come up with some things in the interim, let's just make sure we know what these are, make sure the staff have these, make sure we, that gets us to a point where, in another cycle, even in another three years, if none of us are here, and there's a bunch of, we have at least identified that it looks like this, and then they can say, good, we want to assess this, we want to evaluate this. Well, before we can evaluate, we have to know what it is, and what it looks like.
Right. Well, when you say staff, too, I really think we need to have staff input. I mean, what are they teaching? What format are they using? What's being, what's successful? Talk about the strengths and the weaknesses, what
What do they think is missing?
Right. What's missing? How can we help facilitate getting more resources, if it needs be? You know, what can we do as a board to support the overwhelming amount of work they already do on a day-to-day basis? You know, and it's easy for us to sit here and say, oh, I would like to see this and this, because we're from this perspective, and looking at it from this lens. But if what we're saying here doesn't transfer to the reality of the classroom, then that might be something really lofty. So I don't know how we would go about having staff come and talk to us about what do they do, and what format are they using, and what's, what does it look like for them?
Could I suggest something? Oh. You know, we're, I'm sort of seeing student learning. I'm sort of seeing a subset called curriculum. I heard, I think, three questions that we could work on for the year from the conversation, and please make them better, but I heard, what is our current curriculum?
What is it? Yep.
How does it compare to other school districts? And how do we make it better? What does it need to get better? Or something along that way. I think that would be, I think that would be very doable for us to report on that well before the year is ended. Not in detail, but in a conceptual framework, where we're not talking about every lesson plan, but we are talking. Now, I may have missed a point in the conversation, but those were the three points that
No, I don't think the expectation is to have the level of detail that's shooting for the moon. I think the expectation is, let's start walking, and let's, what are we doing? We don't know, because we don't have it in writing. We can, we hear all the great things, but, you know, like, if somebody leaves, what do we have to show that they were here?
Sure.
You know, that's how I go back to that question.
As a policymaking board, knowing what it is would be better than what we've done now for the last couple of months, which is talk about what it might be. So that's, I think that's a great start.
It's just one of many. But, I mean, if that kind of captures it, that's something I can work with.
Yeah.
And something that we can write up, and I can, I can work with folks on that topic. Happy to do that.
And don't let me soapbox, but one of the things, when we've talked, I don't know, somewhere back when, we talked about what the meeting format could look like, what we might do at meetings. One of the things that I continue to think would be a great idea would be to, as often as possible, maybe it's not at every meeting, but at once a month, let's say, have teachers and students come to our meetings and be before us, not just to say, look, this is a music group, a music class, and we're going to sing a song, but have the teachers come back, have the teachers bring those students, and bring those learning experiences, and tie it for us, back to the standards that drove them to deliver that kind of instruction with that kind of material. In some districts, we're talking about I-can statements. I can do this, I can judge this, I can measure this, whether it's the I-can statements that they're proving with that experience, or that example they're showing us, or if they are, you know, grade level expectations, or, you know what I mean? Whatever the standards are that they are reaching toward with that instruction and that exercise, have them come, because it does two things. It reinforces for students that it's important at this level, what they're doing. It reinforces for them the faith we have, and the confidence we place in their teachers. And at the same time, it reinforces to the teachers that it is, it's meaningful to us, and important to us, that we know how they're making out, and how this is becoming practice in their classrooms, so.
Well, and the community.
Certainly, yeah.
Well, it helps us in hiring teachers. If we have a teacher that isn't as strong as we need him to be, because we're slower or behind in certain areas, it's an easy tool to look at and say, we've targeted this, this is what we're looking for in an employee, you know, in a teacher.
Well, and I think it develops this intrinsic motivation for all of us, to be more diligent, to be more creative, to be more student-centered, because that's really what we're all supposed to be doing for the school board. You know, that's our prior, primary goal. So it, there's other goals here, too. I was thinking about, you know, some of the things we've rattled off in the past as well. You know, goal number six, I think, is definitely a priority for us, facility. You know, how can we try to ensure a safe learning environment? And I have an update during the committee report for the Joint Advisory Committee, but it seemed we reached a consensus. If we have children in that building, we need to, we need to make it safe for them. So, you know, I think with all the things going on in the world, and some of the news stories, we hear about other schools, how do we ensure that students feel safe? And how can we ensure that that safety allows them the maximum amount of learning? So are there any thoughts on that, or do we see other areas that could be priorities for us?
Well, I think facility's going to be a priority all year.
Yeah.
It's been a priority for years, so.
So I think that when you talk about facility, one, obviously
Right now
The New Market Junior Senior High School is
Fire and Life Safety.
Addressing that as an issue. There's multiple layers of that, but that could be part of your goal, and I think fire and life safety is one that's on the agenda tonight, and that would be important. I just throw it out there that at a meeting back in the spring, maybe it was while there was still snow on the ground, there was, there had been over the winter, a Department of Homeland Security grant opportunity, which was a matching grant for safety and security measures to be taken inside school buildings. And I want to say that we were talking about a $50,000 grant. You had to match, you had to spend 50 to get the other 50, and Dr. Hayes worked with some members of the staff, and I'm not sure if our SRO Police Office, Police Department was involved, but they came to us with a proposal to upgrade security in our buildings. It was card swipes, it was cameras, it was, I forget what else, right? And then the grant was competitive, and the juice all ran out. Everybody got the money, and, but they came forward saying, we think we might like to do these things anyway. And we asked a couple of questions, and then there were other priorities, and it never came back. So there was an initiative out there, there was some assessment done. I think safety is another piece of facility, not necessarily just at that building, but at the elementary as well. And if there are things, if there are things that current staffing, or current leadership, you know, in the buildings and in the community, like the PD, think we should be doing to make those buildings safer, given the world we live in today, and some of the things that we've seen happen in the last 10 years around the country, then we want to at least have that conversation, be aware of those things, right? So, I mean, that might be another one, which is really
Yeah, that came up in a joint loss meeting, that was an issue brought up.
Really?
Good. But it was, and also along the facilities plan, too, is maintenance of it. I mean, we don't, I've never seen a long-term maintenance of a plan for the buildings. And just document that, so we can, I know we have the CIP group putting that together, but those are, in my opinion, maybe for like larger projects for the town, but on a building-by-building process. I mean, that should be something that we're looking at, or maybe putting something aside for.
Do we have written the CIP plan for the school board written? Or are they still working on that?
I went, I went at the last meeting, Mary Jane, and reported on our inventory of buildings. There were, I believe, I reported on six sites. One was 220 South Main Street, one was 25% of Town Hall, one was the elementary school, one was the high school, maybe it wasn't six. And use the inv, oh, yes, there were two lots, like 218A, South Main Street, and 216, they're on the, they're on the street.
They're on the street.
I'm so sorry.
Oh.
I'm so sorry.
There was like, there were two lots beside 220. So the carpenter property, the insurance building, and one other. So those are my six.
System.
Town halls, and the elementary school, and the high school. Reported on their value, the acreage, and all that. And I'll be going back to CIP to talk a, like, some, a few bigger things next week, and also they wanted to know the reserves. And the reserves are in your packet somewhere. We got, I'll be reporting on those.
So I don't want, well, let me jump from facility and say out loud, they don't all have to be heavy lifting, right?
Right.
I think in the area of communication, and communication, community, et cetera, we have talked over the last, I don't know, at least the last couple of months, two or three, and maybe before, talked about website, newsletter, things of that sort. So, and I know that some of that's on the agenda, some of that's in the offing. Still, those have been among our goals, apparent goals, because of the attention we've paid to it over the, over the months that have led to now. So no reason why you can't take advantage of accomplishments in the offing.
Yeah.
And, you know, claim some of that as well. Well, I mean, part of this is not, this is not necessarily to scorecard ourselves, but it's, to have a sense of what our priorities have been in our, in each year. So I think we ought to document some of that as well.
And I just wanted to note, Eric Wiegode sent me something in the mail about the Pittsfield School District, and in it they have focus areas, so with specific goals within those areas. And I only have one, but I'd love to pass it around, and thank you to Eric, because I, I really think that that kind of helped, at least for me, to think, wow, you know, producing something, not in this format, of course, but having something that has student learning and our attainable goals, I think would be a really nice way for us to look at it, and that could be a good example for us, too.
It would a great tool to give out on open houses.
Right.
All the information, just
Right. This is what your child will be learning this year.
Yeah.
You know, you can also access it online. And that way, people in the community who don't have children in the school, they can look at it as well.
Yeah.
I'd like to, are we, can I go on to another one?
You should.
Oh, thank you. Sorry. I'd like to explore our technology in the school, too, and see where we are. I know that, I think in the eighth grade, they're using some of the Google Chrome, what do you call them?
Chromebooks.
Google Chromebooks. But I don't know, that, and the smart, the smart boards, explore, see how those are working in the classroom.
That's great. So would that fit best under student learning? How do they use technology? Okay.
What technology we might be lacking.
Yeah. Okay.
So one of the things I think that, for me, has been a question that falls under human capital for me, is we're graduating classes right now, 49 or 50 kids, and we're bringing kids, we're bringing classrooms in that are, we're bringing classes in that are 95, 100, at the sixth grade. So there's a, there's a day coming, a year coming, and I didn't see it in the proposed budget this year, so maybe it's next year, or it's the year after. Maybe it's not coming, but it's not, it's not hard to intuit that at some point, there might be the suggestion, well, look, our class sizes have doubled, which means I need one of these, and one of these, and one of these, and one of these, you know, and these staffing-wise. But I have to be honest that when Principal Andruski sat with us here a year ago, well, maybe it wasn't quite a year ago, whenever it was, and we looked over the schedule, maybe it was, and the schedule had buried in it, this person's got this class, and this class, and this class, and here's the class sizes. I looked at that, and I thought, wow, okay, I saw some class sizes that would suggest that in some areas, you don't need to add staff, just because you double the kids, because when you take seven, eight, 10, 12 kids, you know, and you could double that, and you can go to 14, 18 in a classroom, that might not be unthinkable. Hey, I'd be the first one to be a champion, any way we can, anytime we can, of smaller class sizes, because I think it's got, it has to, it has to have some value, although there's lots of research, one way or the other, to argue for or against the impact of class sizes on learning. But I would love for there to be some conversation, or some assessment, some projection, some kind of pro forma that says, we know right now that the sixth grade class is 96 kids, and we know right now that the senior class is, whatever it is, 51. And that means that X number of years from now, assuming some basic parameters about everybody's going to take math, everybody's going to take, you know, we know what the program of studies is, everybody needs four years of math, so they're going to need, we can say right now that in year, mm, we're going to need another math teacher, and another language arts teacher, and we're going to need another social studies teacher. Because if those are things Because if those are things that really are in the, in the offing, to the extent that we can know about it, and start planning for it, and talking about it.
So, forecasting staffing?
So, forecast, talking about our human capital, really, you know, our needs. The same way you'd look at building maintenance, of carrying costs of the buildings, and so forth, we could be talking about where that's headed. And not necessarily in terms of dollars, right now, it's just really in terms of head count. You know, what does that mean to student learning, and, you know, all of that? I just think, there've been members of the community, Al Zink comes to mind, who stood up a couple of times, and talked about forecasting, you know, with the, with the budget committee, with the community, with the town, et cetera, where we headed. Uh, and, I mean, I think this is a small piece of it, having a sense of what our staffing needs are going to be down the line, so.
The one that I like on here is that, under the finance that you have there, Nate, grants?
Yeah.
You know, she said, you know, I don't know what we have in Newmarket.
I think that's how they got the Google Chromebooks.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I, I heard stories, when, years ago, how they used to contract, hire people, pay them money based on production, and rece, receiving these grants. And they used to be more money, more value than their, the salary that they were paid. So, that's, you know, maybe that's something to discuss.
Do we have someone who does that in the district, writes, applies for grants on our behalf, or is it done by the-
I would tell you-
Administration, teachers?
I mean, he could answer, but I, my guess is going to be that you've got an IDEA grant, and that's probably written by Jean Parsons, with her support staff. I don't know who handles Title I, but that might fall under Jean.
Pat.
Pat does Title I.
Mm-hmm.
So, you've got, what this was, this was simply people in Hampton, like Pat, and Jean, and superintendent, helping educate the board, because they had asked questions. Well, what is Title I? What do we use it for? How much do we get, and what do we use it for? In, in general terms, not, not specifically, but, and we did the same thing with IDEA, to understand how that, uh, in most communities, IDEA is paying for a, a number of the paraprofessionals that are working with their kids, one-to-one. And, many of the, many of the dollars that get spent, get spent on the contracted services for, you know, special, uh, special therapies, or special consults, and so and so forth, just to make sure that, again, we all have a baseline sense of, how much are we getting, and how are we using it? Because every year, there's, I say every year, I mean, Mike can certainly speak to that, the legislative work he does, and has in the past in DC, there are, there is routinely this, this, the fear-mongering that they're going to whack us, there's going to be a lot less Title I money, a lot, you know, that those entitlement dollars are going to go away from the federal level. And it's been true in some, in some respects, over time. Some of those things have whittled away a little, so, um, knowing what that stuff's all about is helpful, because if, if it ever were to evaporate 50%, for instance, it's got a budgetary impact, or a programmatic impact, because you either, either have to do it, or have to do without it, so.
I, I would just fill in a couple of things. We refer to some federal grants as entitlement grants, and that means we have been allocated a certain amount of money, but we still have to write a grant, so that we can use that money.
Right.
Um, I think you were also referring to some other kind of grants, which they call-
Private grants.
Private grants, competitive grants, at which point, you're, you're one of many people that apply for a grant, and you're competing, uh, for, for those dollars. I will say that usually grants come with some strings, because the grant has a purpose of who they want to serve, or what they want the funds to go to. That is, the people that have the money that are awarding the grants, and sometimes that's hard to coordinate. And secondly, it's sometimes hard for somebody who writes grants part-time to compete with people who write grants full-time. And they know how to communicate, they know how to collect the right, right things, uh, and, at one time, a wealthy district had to coordinate with a poor district in order to get the grants. I can share with you one final thing. If you go onto the State Department of Ed's website, and this doesn't include all private grants, but they, they do a key messages every month, and one of the sections in this Department of Ed's key messages every month is grants. And I routinely look at that section every month to see. And, and I got to tell you, over the last three or four years, it hasn't been very exciting. That's other grants coming, the, the, the federal government has entitlement grants and competitive grants, and I, I look at those to see what they're talking about for competitive grants. But you're welcome to take a look at that as well. Um, New Hampshire Charitable Trust, we've, we've looked at those grants in the past. And then, but there may be some private grants in the area, or in the community even, that I, that I'm unaware of, and if people hear about them, we're certainly willing to, to make a plea to do that. But, that's, that's kind of an overview.
To Matt's point, it was just the question of, how much money is out there in grants, and what would be the value add of having somebody available to us to write those, or to apply for those grants? So, that would, something, obviously, doesn't sound like there's a lot.
Well, I don't know of anybody doing it, in my, amongst my colleagues. I don't know of anybody doing it, and I've heard it discussed a number of times. But that doesn't mean we know everything. You know, because we don't.
All right. So, it looks like our top ones from this list, in no order, is student learning, human capital, and resources, communication, facility, and definitely finance. So, the only one that we haven't necessarily spoken about is number four on this agenda is governance. So, budget timelines, drafts, topics of interest, review goals and objectives.
Uh, under governance, I, I'd like to remind the board that you've authorized Barrett Christina to read your policies and comment on your policies.
Yep.
And I would certainly like to see you add that to your list, um, and, and try to do some significant, I think at some levels, it's better to have a policy that's a little generic, it may not be exactly, but if we start arguing over sentences here, we're in trouble, because we've got a file full of that big of policies, and, and, and there is a, there is a cost benefit of how many you can do.
Reducing them, yeah.
But, I think, I think it would be good if we could take advantage of Barrett's review, and he will come back with us in some level of priority, and the ones that we're required to have by law, at least, try to get through those before the end of the year. I mean, it is one of the ma, it's one of the major functions of the board, albeit not ex, not the most exciting. But, but I, I think it's good housekeeping.
So, when he, when he reviews that, are we going to get a draft of those things that he, um, believes we can omit and/or change? Is that how that's going to work?
He's going to read our whole policy book, we've delivered it to him, he's going to have comments on each policy.
That's exciting.
But he will give, he will give us a list of the policies that we have that are required by law. He will also give us a list of any policies that are required by law that we don't have, and he will make some recommendations to us.
Okay.
The second thing that the School Boards Association does for us, it gives us some model policies. Meaning, uh, it's all codified, and it gives us a model policy. And, my experience has been that board members like to not adopt model, model policies, they'd like to make it work for the local community, and that, that's always a little tough. It, it, that's where a lot of conversation gets, gets hung up in a lot of words, and so, you know, maybe we can talk, you know, and the, sometimes I have seen one or two members of the board work with, uh, the superintendent, and the board has just taken the recommendation of those two people for policies. But, it can be time-consuming, can get bogged down. So, I just warn you of that piece. But I do think, I do think, under governance, we, we've got started on, on policies, and-
Hey, my biggest thing with that, and I, I'm just one, and, and I respect that, but I have to say, I hope we come away from the review that Barrett can give us, um, with fewer policies rather than more. You know what I mean? Because-
I can't imagine more, Nathan.
It just, it's not, it can't be lost on anybody, that every policy is equivalent to an obligation. And every time you say, we shall, you risk, if you don't-
Yeah.
Somebody taking it a task for that. And, and there are a lot of policies we must have, and some we really should have. And then there are a whole lot of policies that have come out of the School Boards Associations, you know, specifically, that are completely optional. If you really had an itch in your community, you might want to adopt something like this. And a lot of communities, over time, have adopted every lick and run of those things. And, if you take it in the aggregate, it's, it's an obligation, that it's, it can, it can feel nearly impossible to, to honor successfully. So, I think that that's going to be important when he comes back, so.
Sure. But I, I, I do think you ought to take credit for that work.
That, too.
In your policies.
Yeah.
That sounds to me like a whole lot of work between now and, and election time. And that's the only other thing that we might nuance, is to have a conversation, when we talk next, about, how do we contemplate the timing of goals? Is it, is it based on the annual meeting cycle? Is it on the school year cycle? Is it on the fiscal year cycle? Maybe it's all of the above, because of the nature of some of the things that are in our goals, but, um, if, if we contemplate that we want to have a, an annual process, or at least a routine process, by which we consider what our goals were, and how we did, and set more goals moving forward, uh, putting together a, you know, just a skeleton timeline of how that's intended to flow every year, would be something that would be useful to future boards. But I think this is a great start for, for our goals, you know, for setting goals. Especially if there's a couple that are in the work.
Yeah. It's like when you make a list, and you do something that's not on the list, but you put it on there anyway, just so you can cross it off.
Cross it off, yes.
I don't know how many people do that, but I'm very guilty of that.
I would, I would also like to, I know that we talked about this earlier, but I, um, about having teachers and students come in, I'd also like to see more of that from the elementary school, because I don't feel like we see a lot of the, um, the younger children. I know, I mean, maybe we could do it at a work session at six, so that it's not so late. Um, but, I don't know. I, I know that there's a lot of community service going on over there, and I think that we should be recognizing them at all grade levels, and not just at the high school level. I feel like sometimes-
And maybe, because I know it's no small thing to have the teachers organized to bring students in. Maybe, given that we still have two meetings a month, maybe it's student learning at one meeting, and then we reserve our staff recognitions, because I know that we've continued to do that, and want to do that, we're doing some of that tonight, and if we offset them on the alternative meeting, then maybe the demand isn't, and isn't too great on the teachers and the kids.
Can I ask a point to clarify, is where would you fit, like, expanding the kindergarten program? Where would that fall on these list of goals? If, if at all?
Oh, I think it's right there under student learning.
Okay.
And, and it's closely connected to curriculum.